I think we need to get started. If we could. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Michaels.
Here.
Mitchell. Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Yeah.
Rosales. Schwartz. Alex.
Here.
Burksen.
Here.
Carter. Covert. Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hartke.
Here.
James.
President.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler. Langenheim. Maxwell. McGuire.
Present.
Schrader.
Here. I declare quorum present. We'll proceed with approval of minutes.
Slow move.
The minutes of the whole November 12th, 2013. I have a motion for Mr. James. Is there a second? Mr. Hartke, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And the committee will hold minutes for December 10th, 2013. Is there a motion for approval? Ms. Covert, is there a second? Mr. Esri, any discussion? Changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Ms. Covert, Mr. James, second. Any additions, corrections, Mr. Quisenberry?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I ask that we remove items one and two from Section E of policy.
Okay, very well. Any other corrections, additions? Or I shouldn't say additions, corrections. All right, very good. All those in favor of the agenda with the correct, or the changes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public participation, I don't have any names this evening, so we'll go right to communications. For, I'm sure the Democrat Caucus knows, the Republican Caucus has heard too, and just for the general public, Mr. Kurtz is in the ER tonight, he's got some abdominal pain, so we keep him in our thoughts and prayers this evening. That's why he's not in attendance, so. With that, communications, we'll go ahead to Justice and Social Services, Ms. Burksen.
Can I get your mic, please? Thank you. There we go. That we accept these for put on file?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move we receive and accept these reports and place them on fire, file.
Fire? Whatever. Whatever.
So it has to be an electronic fire? I'll second that.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all there is for Justice this time? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, shame on me. Thank you, Ms. Burksen. Policy, personnel, and appointments, Mr. Quisenberry?
Keep it away from Mr. Kurtz. All right, tonight for policy, the first item on the agenda is nomination for the Bailey Memorial Cemetery Association for one unexpired term ending June 30th, 2017. And I don't know, since we don't have the Chair here to make his recommendation, do we have? Do you have?
It's the Chair's appointment for Rachel Schrader. That would be the Chair's appointment for this evening, since there are no other applicants for it, so.
Is there a second? Mr. Jay, I saw your hand go up first. Any discussion about this appointment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passed unanimously. I will note that there is a list of appointments expiring in 2014 in your packet. Please go out, if you have any that are in your particular area, or if there's individuals you know that would be good in serving in these roles, go out and recruit them. Get them to apply and ask them to come and talk to us, so that Lloyd will get a chance to see them, we'll all get a chance to see them when they come. The next thing on the agenda is the county clerk report for 2013, and I entertain a motion to accept it. Mr. Esri moves, seconded by Astrid. The clerk is not here, so I don't know if you have any questions. We can try to answer them. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item, items under Section C, is regarding the Champaign-Southwest Mass Transit District. There is a resolution authorizing the discontinuance of the Champaign-Southwest Mass Transit District Services and a dissolution of the Southwest Mass Transit District Board. And that is, that's based on their actually voting themselves out of existence. We do have to take an action on this. Entertain a motion? Mr. McGuire has moved, seconded by Lorraine. Any discussion about this? Mr. Schrader?
I just have a question for Ms. Bucy, and that concerns what's ever left of the funds after all the bills and such have been paid from the district. They're going to be paid out to the Treasurer's Office, I believe. Do we just put it in the General Corp., or do we earmark it for something?
That clause is in the resolution because it's statutorily required. However, I don't believe there will be any funds left in the Champaign-Southwest Mass Transit District, so, but it would go into General Corporate to be, if there were any funds, to be then appropriated at the Board's direction.
Any other questions? Mr. Alex?
I apologize because I can't remember who just told me this, but my understanding is that the remain, that at some point in the past, they gave the remainder of their money to the community foundation in support of mass transit. Is that true? So essentially, there's no money left at this point?
That's correct.
Was it? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That also passed unanimously. Next is the county administrators' report. I entertain a motion to accept it and place it on file. Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Harper. Any questions for Deb? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, any other business that somebody would like to bring up for policy? For the Chair's report, I will give you a couple of updates. It's my understanding that we should, if we have not already, we should be receiving the tablets for our paperless pilot, and they'll be distributed soon. Deb, you want to give an update on that?
Yeah, we actually do have them. We're in the process of getting them set up. We will get them to the pilot participants, so that you will be using them by the February cycle of meetings.
Okay, and then the next item I want to update you on is that I have several individuals who are willing to work on reviewing our current strategic plan and going through a refresh. Patsy Petrie and Josh Hartke from the Democratic side have signed on to do that. Mr. Jay was going to let me know if your side had some individuals?
Yes, we do. Gary Maxwell, and I'd like to submit Jeff Kibler. And if for some reason Jeff can't do it, Jim McGuire has indicated he would, so.
Okay. And just to let everybody on the Board understand what this looks like, this group will coordinate this review and refresh of the strategic plan. It will involve all of the Board members in soliciting ideas, in prioritizing items, and then in reviewing any updates that are suggested. So just because you're not on this group doesn't mean that you're off the hook for participating in updating the strategic plan for the county. So look for more information on that as the year goes on. And then, let's see. I think that, I think that is, oh, yeah, I will update everybody. I know there were, there were a couple of rules, things on the agenda tonight. It was determined that it didn't, that they were not necessary to be acted on right now because of the language in the current rules. But we are heading towards a February study session on an update to our rules. And I know that both caucuses have talked about this some, but I would expect that in that study session, we would go over all of the items that people are proposing for rules updates. And then that would mean that we could have a draft set of new rules ready for consideration in March. However, because of how much time we have to give for rules to be reviewed, it, odds are, we won't be able to vote on this until April. Is that correct, Deb? Did I get, did I save that before I went off track? Okay. All right. Any questions about that? Okay. Designation for items on consent, that would be A1 and C1. And that is it from policy.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry. Mr. Alex with Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sitting in the wrong seat. This is kind of strange. First item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Welch.
Just two quick things tonight that, just to report on things that occurred in December. The first one is the tax anticipation warrants for the nursing home were received in a nursing home bank account of $937,885 on December the 20th. And on December 31st, we had 10 debt service payments that we made. Just wanted to report to you that finally, we were going to drop one off of that list, and that's the early retirement incentive from 2006, so that payment's been made. So we're down to nine, and that's the extent of my report.
Thank you, sir. May I have a motion to accept the report and place it on file? Moved by Mr. Quisenberry, seconded by, I see somebody, Ms. Burksen. Comments, questions? Ms. Petrie.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
This may be premature, and if it is, when you have the data, if you would bring it to us. I'm interested in how much you anticipate in the way of property tax revenue now that the windmills are up and running for our next budget cycle.
That's a great question. We had a tax cycle meeting this week, and someone mentioned that there were 30 of them now up, so I'll be interested to know what the answer is, and I'll be glad to report it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions for the Treasurer? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting the report and placing it on file, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
This motion, report is accepted. Thank you. On to Mr. Farney for the Auditor's Report.
Good evening. The Auditor's Report is available on my webpage, and you'll notice the FY '13 numbers. We're getting close to the completion of FY '13. In fact, Thursday's the last day offices can turn in requisitions for FY '13. So we're just about complete with that, and so if things continue to hold true, we're looking okay.
Very good. May I have a motion to accept the Auditor's Report and place it on file? Moved by Mr. Hartke, seconded by, was that you, Ms. Court? Any discussions, comments, questions for the Auditor? Ms. Court?
You say March was the last month that they can submit something for?
Yeah, Thursdays. Mm-hmm.
Thursday?
Thursday's the last day for them to submit a requisition from FY '13.
Okay, now what if they get bills in and?
Then it will come out of their FY '14 budget. And that's what ends up on your bad purchases list as we move on, where it just says it was paid out of the wrong fiscal year.
I had a question for you. The truck that we're doing a budget amendment on tonight for the Highway Department, do we know, is that here and/or paid for yet? Do we know?
I do not know.
Deb, you have any idea? Okay, it was, I was asked, and I did not know. I thought that-
I will find out for you.
I did not think it had been paid for yet, but I was not sure.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure it hasn't been paid for yet, if we're acting on it.
Okay, that's what we wanted to know.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. Any other additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting the Auditor's Report, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That is accepted. Thank you, sir.
And I left on all your desks the bad purchases list for your action for next week, and if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to fill you in.
I could, happy to take questions on it now, if anybody has any. Looks like, oh, Ms. Michaels.
I just was wondering why the flowers came out. I kind of thought that would be under their budget or whatever.
Well, the flowers are on there, the last item on your list is a $90 flowers purchases sympathy type thing. That went on there because in your policy, there is not really, it's not an allowed expense. Because it came out of an elected official's office, they have the ability to make that purchase.
Okay.
So it's just letting you know it doesn't follow normal policy.
Okay.
Have a feeling we'll let that one slide.
Yes, I just wanted an explanation. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on the purchases not following purchases policy report? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Moving on to the Nursing Home Monthly Report. Mr. Maxwell circulated an email recently describing the most recent Nursing Home Board Directors Meeting. We have Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell here to discuss any nursing home related issues. It would appear that there are none. Okay, well, may I have a motion to accept the Nursing Home Financial Report and place it on file? Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Hartke. Any additional comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We'll accept that. On to Budget Amendments and Transfers. Our first item is Budget Amendment 13-61, $3,000 in increased appropriations for the fiscal year 2013 budget for the Public Defender's Office. May I have a motion to forward this to the full Board with a recommendation for approval? Moved by Mr. Hartke, seconded. Seconded by Ms. Burksen. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. Budget Amendment 13-64, $4,127 for the fiscal year 2013 Personnel Budget for the Auditor's Office. May I have a motion to forward this to the full Board? Moved by Mr. Esri, seconded by Mr. Harper. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. Finally, for Budget Amendments, Budget Amendment 14-5, $150,996 in the fund balance of the Highway Department for a tandem truck ordered in 2013 which was not received in fiscal year 2013. May I have a motion to forward this to the full Board? Moved by Mr. Jay, seconded by Ms. Covert. Discussion, Mr. Richards.
Just so I'm clear, we don't think that we paid for this yet, that it actually came and got paid for.
It is the Auditor's opinion that we have not yet paid for it.
I'm confident it was not, it was not received by November 30th, which means you cannot pay for it out of the fiscal year 13 budget. If it has arrived since December 1st, it has to be paid out of the fiscal year 14 budget.
I understand that, but the question was, I was just wondering if we had already paid for it before we voted on the amendment to pay for it.
As the Auditor indicated, he wasn't sure, and I'm not sure either. I mean, we could get that information to you tomorrow, but if it has been paid for, he still needs a budget amendment, because he paid for it with monies that were to be used for other expenditures in fiscal 14.
Oh, I agree, and I'm sure we'll see it next month on purchases not following policy if we did, so that'll-
No, no, you won't, because you're approving this.
I think the question is just, did we, we're putting the cart before the horse, did we pay for it out of the fiscal year 2014 budget before we amended the fiscal year 2014 budget?
I don't know the answer to that question, neither did the Auditor.
And we'll find out before the full Board meeting, because that's when we take the official action on it. In fact, if you want to vote no, we can keep it off the consent agenda. Mr. Schrader?
I think my question would be, maybe this is along the same lines as Mr. Richards, was this in the budget for the Highway Department? For this $150,000 truck?
It was in the, it was in the fiscal year 2013 budget for the Highway Department, and they, they didn't spend that because the truck didn't show up. So we're basically moving the money from last year's budget to this year's budget to cover it. Is that-
Yeah, it was an approved expense that followed all purchasing policy requirements, and the money stayed in the fund balance because it didn't get spent in '13 because the truck didn't make it here. So you're just reencumbering or forwarding the purchase to fiscal 14 when the truck will be received.
Okay. Mr. Quisenberry?
Just more of a general question regarding something like this. Do we have a standard timeline that we pay bills like this? I mean, if we, I know it'll come with a net 30 or a net 60 term associated with it when we actually receive it, but do we wait until 30 days after we've received something before we pay in general?
I think Mr. Farney's the guy who could answer that.
And I just texted Mr. Wengler to see if the truck is here, so I'm hoping we get an answer from him. When a requisition is given to our office, the requisition doesn't get turned over to us until the item is in our possession. If it's turned in by Thursday, it's paid on the following check run, which is the following Friday.
Regardless of the terms of the payment?
Regardless of the terms. I mean, as soon as we have it, we don't, we don't hold anything in our office. So if the individual departments want to hold it for some reason, that's up to them, but as soon as it comes over to us for payment, it gets done the next run.
But you're not allowed to pay it unless it's in the budget, right?
Right. Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, that was my understanding.
Yeah.
For which we are inferring that it hasn't been paid for yet.
Let's, let's say, such as in this case, the Highway Department has budget, but it's budgeted for other things. Our office doesn't control that. We, we just know they've got a pot of money, they've given us a bill, they've got enough money in their pot of money, they could pay it. What priorities they have for that money is up to that office.
Okay, that's, I understand. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any additional comments, questions, or discussion on the truck? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, that motion carries. Moving on to the County Administrators' Report.
You have the General Corporate Fund Fiscal 2013, almost final report. As you heard the Auditor indicate, we are still paying some bills out of fiscal 2013 and receiving revenues. So the, the final number, the projected, is based on what we expect to receive and/or spend yet this month. Year-to-date through December 31st, which is when historically the fiscal year would have ended, we had received $32,275,734 in revenue, which is 99.1% of the total budget for the year in revenue. What we're projecting, because we are now posting for an additional 30 days, so it's like posting 13 months of revenue to the fiscal year 13 budget, because we extended the closeout of the fiscal year, is projected to be $33,55,300, which is 101% of the budgeted revenue for the fiscal year. And those additional payments are primarily in the state shared revenues. It's in an additional income tax payment, an additional sales tax, sales taxes payments, that's primarily where it is. You'll note overall, the revenue for the year, that we were down $200,000 in property taxes, and that is primarily attributable to the Carl property tax issue that we dealt with this year. The other sizable difference between budgeted and actual is in general government, which is our fees, and they were almost half a million less than what was projected and budgeted for this year. So that's something we will be talking with our officials about, and also watching closely in fiscal year 14, because it's possible we have now overstated that particular revenue line in the budget, and we need to be cautious about that. Other than that, the other one that's down is inter-fund transfers, but I believe there may still be some more of those happening this month, and I wasn't really sure how much, so I didn't project any change there, but I imagine that might be slightly better by the end of January. On the expenditure side, we're, we've underspent the budget in almost every area. Year-to-date, so as of 12/31, which would again have been where we would have been under the last year's reporting model, we're at $32,516,130, which is 97.3% of the total budget. We do anticipate some additional expenses this month, so that brings up the anticipated to 97.6%, or $32.6 million. And basically, we've underspent in just about every category of expenditure, underspent the budget, but that's not terribly unusual. The summary, so if we had closed it out after only 30 days, the actual fiscal 2013 budget would have had a $240,396 deficit, which is less than 1%. It's 0.72% of the total budget. But because we are posting for that additional 30 days revenues to the fiscal 13 budget and expenditures, we actually will end with about a $415,000 surplus, or, you know, revenue in excess of expenditure, which is 1.24% of the total budget. Puts our fund balance, based on last year's budget, at 14.6%. It's a little difficult to, we have to figure out how to state the fund balance for fiscal 14, because it's a cash amount against a 13-month budget, which really brings it down, but it'll go back up again then in '15.
I guess I should point out that that, that $400,000 to the good for fiscal year 2013 includes the $330-some-thousand of the nursing home loan that was, that was reclassified. So that was essentially a paper loss, and in spite of that, we still, you know, made $418,000. So thank you, everybody, for your good works. Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Richards.
Yeah, looking here at some of these differences versus budget, I understand the concern about things that ran short on income, but we also have several substantial things that ran high. Is the same thing true there? Is that, are those one-time situations? Are those trends that maybe we understated some income going into this year as opposed to overstating the income in other areas?
Well, where you see income that's higher, you're looking at the state shared revenue group, corporate personal property replacement tax.
Or income tax.
Yeah, those are all because we're getting 13, we're getting an extra month of revenue on those.
Okay.
Those would be much closer to actual budget, really almost right on target with actual budget, were it not for the extra month of revenue.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to keep an eye on the fee revenue, is what we're hearing?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Richards?
Ms. Bucy, to your knowledge, are there any more big expenditure claims yet to be posted?
No.
That would really affect this?
No.
No. I guess the other question was, we were asking about this in our caucus, I think you probably answered this, is the main reason that the cash balance has gone up significantly since last month is because the 13 months of, well, extra revenue still being posted?
Because of that 60-day closeout and the extra 30 days of revenue effectively. And the revenue end of it is going to be higher than the expenditure end of it, because most expenditures for '13 were probably submitted expenditures for 13 were probably submitted and taken care of in December. And these revenue numbers are really actual because we've already received the January payments for state shared revenues, so those aren't really projected for like corporate personal property tax, income tax, the one-cent sales tax, and the quarter-cent sales tax. That's really what we have received.
Any other questions on the General Corporate Fund budget report? Seeing none, ask for a motion to accept and place it on file. Ms. Coort and Mr. James, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. On to budget change.
Which is basically the same as it was last month. There really weren't any changes since last month.
I might as well move to accept and place that one on file, too. Mr. Esri, second, Mr. Jay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. I'll accept that one, too. Okay, our final item of finance business for the evening is requesting the release of the RFP 2014-1, the first RFP of 2014, for nursing home management services. For purposes of discussion, I'd like to ask for a motion to release the RFP. Moved by Mr. Quinzenberry, seconded by Mr. Maxwell. To give a little bit of background here, for those of you who may not remember, we appointed a committee a couple of months ago consisting of Kathy Emanuel, who's the Chair of the Nursing Home Board of Directors, County Board and Nursing Home Board members Hartke and Maxwell, County Board members Schwartz and Kibler, and Ms. Bucy, to review this RFP. Mr. Anderson drafted the RFP, they've received input from the Nursing Home Board of Directors, and they've received inputs from some board members. This does not need to go to the full board, it can be released by the Finance Committee tonight if we so choose. I would like to ask Mr. Anderson to say a few words.
Thank you, and in reality, this really does represent a group effort. We had extremely good input on this prior to even initiating the writing of the RFP, and then throughout the evaluation committee's work, and like was mentioned, we had two board members also submit comments on the draft RFP. We have continued since the evaluation committee met to make some minor changes, nothing substantive, but it's continuing to put in place the discussion from the evaluation committee and comments received from other individuals to ensure that there was consistency throughout the document, things like whether or not, you know, we're calling the people, the respondents, a company or that, we removed all that kind of wording so that we would not unintentionally prevent someone, an individual particularly, because we were asked by several members to make sure it was broad enough that an individual could submit a proposal if that person felt they were capable of doing all the work in the RFP. So, I feel that we've come a long way with this, and if there's any other comments that you have as you look at it, please let us know because even if you release this tonight, this RFP has a process in it so that we can issue addenda to the RFP for any clarifications or changes that we need to make to the RFP itself. And those will be not only from comments from board members or the evaluation committee, the Nursing Home Board, anybody that had any input into this, but we'll also be adding addenda as questions come in from people that want to submit proposals to us for the RFP. So, our timetable will be, if you release it tonight, we'll be able to put it on the street, so to speak, tomorrow, and for our distribution, it will immediately go up on our website. It will be published in the News Gazette over multiple Sundays throughout the next month or so, so that we'll have it out in the press. There is also some companies that have self-identified by requesting that administrative services notify them when the RFP is released. In addition, Board Member Maxwell recommended two companies to send the RFP to, and he also recommended posting the RFP with the Illinois Association of County Nursing Home Administrators if they have that service, and we'll be following up on that. And Board Member Petrie provided us a list of six organizations for us to check with for posting the RFP and for identifying similar associations in surrounding states off of at least one of those links. We will follow up with all six, and we will post the RFP on those that allow it and that we have access to and that are affordable. In some cases, an association may have a fee for posting, and so that will become part of the formula whether or not it's affordable for us to do that. We also welcome any other suggestions anyone would have for places we can post the RFP or companies that you feel we should be sending it to. We're going to try to get the broadest distribution as we can so that we hopefully will get in a good crop of responses to the RFP itself. And since you've had, hopefully, a few days to look at it, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from board members? Excuse me, committee members? We had a couple that are, I'm sorry, Patsey, do you want to take the couple that came up in our caucus?
No, that'll leave up to you, and it isn't a question, more a suggestion that at your pre-proposal meeting, since it will be held in this room, I hope that it can be streamed so any agencies or management firms that are interested but are not easily, can get to the meeting, can view it through streaming.
And one of the things to point out, any responses we make in the pre-proposal conference, so as questions come up and we answer those questions, an addenda will be filed with the responses, the questions will be written out, the responses will be provided, so that anyone, no matter what their situation, they'll have access to it off of the website.
Thank you, Ms. Burksen, I'm sorry, Mr. Schrader says I missed you.
I don't think we've had long enough to look at it for it to go out. I don't know how people can make a proposal if you have this open-ended amendment of the RFP going on. It closes on March 21st. If we are to okay all these addenda that you're going to add on to this, since we have to okay the RFP, you'll be making addenda into March, and nobody can make a proposal if the RFP can be amended that much.
And if I can respond to that, addenda, this is a normal process for an RFP. Addenda are always a part of an RFP so that we can issue clarifications as questions come in because the respondents may not read something the way we intended it or may not understand it, and so the addenda isn't necessarily to keep adding things to the RFP, it's just to, mostly for clarifications, and that's a standard process.
Didn't you suggest that we should all make suggestions and you could put them in as amendments and addenda?
And I am hoping that since you, since it has been distributed to you, that that would be done in a short order. If you see something that we need to change.
But then we would need to vote on it at another board meeting, would we not? I mean, after we approve this, he can amendment without our approval?
Yes, the county administration can issue clarifications and changes to existing RFPs, it's done all the time. Yeah, I was gonna...
The only, what, by your purchasing policy, what you are approving tonight is the release of the RFP. You are not necessarily approving, you're approving that an RFP will be released for management services of the Champaign County Nursing Home. The content of the RFP is developed through a process, and if there are changes that need to be added to it, it will be done, you know, those changes will be posted, as Mr. Anderson said. The committee or the board does not have to approve that.
Mr. Quinzenberry.
Yeah, I'd like to say that we've known this has been coming, the input has been solicited over an extensive period of time at the board's request. I think the length of this RFP is not so long that, since everybody had it on Friday, I think everybody had an ample time to read through it, and if they had strong opinions and they've realized it now, I don't think they've been engaged for the past two months, and I'm concerned about that. I am ready to vote to release this. I, you know, Ms. Petrie has been pushing for us to do something like this for the entire time I've been on the board with her, and I think we're at a good point to see what's out there as far as alternatives, and, you know, maybe it will be MPA that comes back with a bid that's the right one, or maybe we'll find an alternative that's better in other ways. So, I think it's time to move forward. Thanks.
Have we had a motion yet, Mr. Chair? Yes, okay. Was there a question? Okay. A couple of comments I could make that arose for Van, and again, we can discuss and propose changes at this committee meeting, that's what the purpose of this meeting is. A couple of things that came up in our caucus, one was your assurance that you believe that the language that might restrict us from to being a corporation as opposed to a partnership or individual and so forth, that that has all been resolved. I didn't see any objectionable language, but I wanted to have you say that you've gone through it and you think you've got it all.
To the best of my knowledge, I ferreted out all of those things that would be inconsistent with the intent of the evaluation committee, which is stipulated in the very first paragraph of the RFP, which in part states that we're seeking competitive proposals from individuals and private, public, and/or not-for-profit entities. And so, throughout the document, that kind of, that intent has been put into place, and I believe I ferreted out all of those places where company was used, where respondent was a better choice.
Thank you. The next item related to, I think, a desire to determine from a given response the extent to which the respondent is going to be an active participant as opposed to a passive participant, for example, somebody who might outsource the management to subcontractors. And I remember at the meeting of the, the open meeting of the RFP committee last week, this was discussed, and I think there was, at least I was satisfied after that, that there's enough information requested in the submittals that would identify what we expect the respondents to be doing themselves as opposed to subcontracting. Is that, would you agree with that at this point? Do you think we could, could we tell the difference in a response from those two cases?
Absolutely. There's actually language in here that asks them to identify the percentage of the work that will be done by them, and then the percentage of the work that's done by the other subcontractors that will be part of their proposal.
Thank you. And then one final item that came up in our caucus, and I should acknowledge Ms. Petrie for raising these issues. The third was related to the administrator structure. The language in the RFP is rather specific, and this is on page 23, but manager shall provide and employ a qualified healthcare executive to act as administrator, and talks about who hires them and who pays them and who approves the compensation. One thing that was proposed in our caucus was that perhaps an additional, have you found it, Van, it's page 23, item 2?
Okay.
One of the things that was discussed in our caucus was that perhaps the language to the effect that alternative structures may be proposed and will be considered could be added to that paragraph. Ms. Schwartz.
I believe you're talking about the proposal to have the administrator be a county employee as opposed to a management?
No, I think the proposal, the, RFP as it says, says, "Manager shall provide and employ a qualified healthcare executive to act as administrator for the CCNH, and a manager's provision of administrator shall be a CCNH expense. The compensation package for the administrator shall be pre-approved by the nursing board." And I think the intent was, our interest was to just make sure that that was left open so that if the respondent did want to propose another structure, which could be the, being a county employee, it could be co-administrators, it could be, you know, we don't know what they're going to propose because they haven't proposed it yet, so we were talking about potentially adding language that said, "Alternative structures may be proposed and would be considered."
Well, my concern about having the administrator be county employee is a twofold concern. The first one is, if the administrator is a county employee, the management company is a consultant as opposed to management, they have notice, and we've had that experience with MPA when they're consultants as opposed to management, so I don't think we want to repeat that.
I would argue...
The second concern is if we do not have a licensed administrator on the ground, the nursing home has to close. And so, if you have them as a county employee and that person resigns or gets sick or whatever, we don't have any backup, whereas the management company, I would assume, it's part of their responsibility and they have access to have an administrator the next morning, which we've actually witnessed last year. So, I would actually be against having, I mean, maybe other alternative structures you're thinking about is okay, but to have that administrator be anything other than the management company's responsibility, I think is a high risk.
I don't disagree with you, and based on the fact that you're on the committee that'll be evaluating these, I suspect that the committee is aware of that as well. I think the concern here was just to make sure that we're not foreclosing arrangements that we hadn't considered. And I would have, I guess I would ask if anybody shares that opinion, if they would like to make a motion to add that language to Section 2.
I so move.
Point of order, do we really need to have a motion since we've already said that Van can make that change based on our input?
No, but it seems it's just as easy to do one as not to do one. Anybody going to second it? Mr. Richards, any discussion on that? And again, to clarify, we just want to add, "Alternative structures may be proposed and will be considered" to page 23, Section 2. And I think that obligates us to do nothing, but means we might get some more suggestions from the vendors. Ms. Petrie?
I think that you laid out fairly well the reason I raised it because in the document, it does ask any entity who submits a proposal to write a narrative on how they would run the nursing home, and my concern was with that paragraph on page 23 that it might deter them from offering some other alternative structural formats. That's the reason I raised it.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Any other comments speaking to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of making this change, please say aye. Aye. Is anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Any additional proposals for changes, comments, questions of Mr. Anderson, Mr. Maxwell?
Just a very, very small, my... I have a very small item. I would suggest inserting the name, the word "home" in capital letters, capitalized "home" between nursing and board. On page 23, item 2.
And that will be in other places, so we would do a global find and replace.
Yeah, I think nursing home board is the correct, nursing home board of directors is the correct term, so we want to make sure that's clear. Any else have anything to bring up at this point? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a vote on the... Deb? Yeah, do you want to talk about that? On the third, on page 21, it says, "Nursing Home Board of Directors," and in parentheses, "Nursing Board," which would seem to suggest that nursing board is used to refer to the Nursing Home Board of Directors. Is that, is that acceptable to you, Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Okay, I think we've got that base covered, then. Anybody, any other hayweights? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of releasing the RFP, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have, there's no other business. My Chair's report is what was just handed to me by the auditor, which says, "As per Tracy Wengler, the Highway Operations Manager, the truck has arrived, the paperwork will be turned in this week, it is not on the road yet." Designation for items on the consent agenda, D1 and 2, that concludes finance.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. Is there any other business before the board this evening? If none, motion to adjourn. James?
Second.
Esri? Were adjourned, thank you.